Council, you're now live on Facebook.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Brew is not with us, I don't think, at this point in time, can we say?
I do not see.
All right. Everyone else is here. So I will now call to order the town of St Andrews' special meeting of council by electronics on Monday, May the 11th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of Councillor Brew, who we hope will join us as we go along. Look to a motion to approve the agenda as written, if I could get a motion to that effect.
It was moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Bishop.
Okay, I didn't get that, thank you very much, Mr Spear. All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, the agenda is approved. I will now move to disclosure of conflict of interest with any matter on the agenda tonight.
No, but we wanted to add one more, the VIC and closed council. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just as part of Mr Spear's presentation, he's talking about a number of different, I guess you could say, locations and jobs within the town of St Andrews, so I thought it'd probably be of the best interest, it's a deployment matter, to go to closed session to talk about those items.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can we bring that up at the end of the regular meeting and I'll look to you to bring that forward, please?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. All right. Counsel, then no rule, there's, I hear no conflicts of interest, therefore we can move on. Our first order of business, we also have with us tonight, for those of you who are watching in, we have with us our Chief Administrative Officer and Treasurer, Chris Spear, and we have our clerk of the town and manager of administration, supervisor of administration, Mr Paul Knopper. So, Mr Spear is here with us tonight in part to give us a presentation to council in relation to the potential revamping of the 2020 budget in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr Spear, can you carry on with that, please?
Sure will, your worship, and if you just give me a moment, Mr Knopper and I've tested this already on Friday, so hopefully, I'm gonna try to go to share screen here.
You're good, Chris.
Okay. Okay. Excuse me for those at home at council, it's at a ninety-degree angle to me, so I'll be jumping to make sure I'm on the right screen as we go along, we'll be okay. So thank you everybody and thank you, your worship councillors and the public who are tuning in tonight for giving me the opportunity to discuss with you the 2020 budget in light of the pandemic. The reality is, this came in upon us unexpectedly, came across the world, and as a town, we're relying a lot on our partners from the governments of Canada and New Brunswick to provide us guidelines and support on how to move forward. Having said that, as a tourism town, we know we're gonna be facing a lot of challenges in the coming year, so I've made quite a few recommended adjustments/projections as we move out this year, and so I want to be able to discuss with council this and get your input on to if you agree with staff's recommendations moving forward. I'm sorry for a minute, Paul, is that switching screens because it's not on mine?
It didn't switch screens, no.
Hey, just give me a moment.
There you go.
That work?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, for this. So just really quick, I know since we've been in this quarantine for so long, we probably feel like we've been at it for years now, but as a really quick reminder that it was late December of last year, right around Christmas, when the Chinese government finally determined that they had an illness on their hand of undetermined etiology and alerted the World Health Organization that a new virus had emerged. By about a month later, in January 25th, Canada has its first case, which is related to travel, most likely from China. And then, actually took about a month and a half later, that was actually our first death due to COVID-19, was on March 9th. Wasn't until March 11th until the WHO declared that there was a world health emergency and declared a global pandemic, so they could coordinate the efforts of nations to try to combat this. But locally, the government of New Brunswick had their first statutory order and declared a state of emergency on March the 19th, which closed schools, businesses, and basically putting a stringent control and restrictions on our day-to-day life. And we've all been living with that for several months now, and as we can see from the premier, we're starting to get released from that. And in preparing these projections, the towns were just trying to crystal ball it a little bit to determine what is gonna be the longer-term effects going through the rest of this year. So immediately, all the town facilities were closed, the arena, the town hall, primarily public works to the general public and things. The biggest effect locally, of course, was the hockey was over for the year and canceled the season, of course, that Alpine Bonds Spiel, which is addressed a little bit later, was canceled immediately. And I thank the volunteers of the curling club, who was a hard thing, where it's the major fundraiser, but they took a couple of days to think about it and then realized it was a bigger problem than just their funds, that it was a worldwide issue, and were, and readily canceled the event. Luckily, just as a discussion was, we had local volunteers spearheaded by the Kiwanis, who did set up to help with our bringing food to those that are either quarantined or didn't feel safe to be going out in public, which is a great service, and even check-in services by phone. And I'm especially grateful, most of us know people in the community who vacation in warmer climes, come back and self-quarantined immediately, and through the cooperation of the Kiwanis and volunteers was able to have their needs met for the fourteen days they were isolated. At this point in time, everybody in town knows, know what Zoom is and how to use it, so going forward, video conferencing will probably become more of a day-to-day life for us, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, especially in terms of the environment. And then social distancing and sanitation becomes the new norm. And certainly, at least for another year, until they decide that they've come up with a suitable vaccine, this two-meter distancing will probably be part of all the plans of any businesses and any larger gatherings. So as I did these projections, I kind of looked at it and had to come up kind of what was the basis for them. So I knew we needed to implement procedures to assure the safety of council, staff and the public. And certainly, from the staff standpoint, work safe in New Brunswick also comes into foray that we have a legal responsibility over and above the moral one to protect them, and then the public as well. You know, New Brunswick has had no deaths, New Brunswick has only had, I wrote it down, I think thirteen thousand cases, or should be not that much, thirteen hundred cases, hundred and twenty? Ball shaking his head, yeah, hundred and twenty, sorry. And cases, and so it's been because, you know, municipalities and communities and the people of New Brunswick have taken this so seriously from the first and have obeyed the suggestions of our scientists and our politicians to avoid passing this along is why we've come out so well. So the safety has become overall the main thing. Another thing was, I didn't, adjusted spending is not to incur more debt or go into a large deficit, as opposed to the government of Canada, where they can just create higher taxes or create more money through other ways, we don't have that opportunity. So if we, you know, we can't decide we're gonna incur a fifty or sixty thousand dollar deficit this year, because it's gonna have to be repaid in two years. So I knew that we just couldn't go as-is and hope for the best, that we had to balance our budget now to make sure that in the future, all the spending and services could be maintained. And I really did want to protect the jobs of our dedicated full-time staff. They've been hardworking and I'm proud to say some municipalities shut down and sent staff home. We kept working through all of this, we worked closely with everybody to put in the measures needed to ensure their safety, but were able to move ahead and do the jobs that are needed of the town. And I'm glad of that, because if we hadn't, we would be months behind on our labor and wouldn't be able to move ahead with many of these projects and things that'll be coming up. The other objectives is, as the state of emergency allows, and this is the thing, a lot of people come to me and say, well, why don't you open this, why don't you open that, why are the park benches, what's taking so long with the garbage cans? All our answers are coming from other places, it's really, there's some gray, but usually we can talk to the EMO Center or the Department of Health, Public Safety, and ask them about certain things, and they get back to us within, you know, a day or two. And so, we know what services the community wants, we know what makes St Andrews what St Andrews is, and so we're aiming for all of that. But if we don't get the green light from the higher levels of government, we can't do it, it's not council or staff trying to be hard to get along with. We're certainly just following the guidelines and protocols of other levels of government that have, you know, scientists and medical officers that are making the decisions for us. But we know we want to open up the parks and attractions, and we've already started that in some ways. We assume visitors are gonna come, I think it's fair to say tourism is likely gonna be down this year significantly, but in either case, there are gonna be visitors and there'll still be nice summer days and nice late spring days, when the population of the town will go up forty, fifty, sixty percent as people come into town. So we've got to prepare ourselves, prepare our streets and prepare businesses when these people come in, so that we can follow the protocols and that they have everything in place. And as said, we're gonna work with everybody to follow guidelines around social distancing and sanitation. So the good news, if there's anything about funding for the town, is that the province of New Brunswick let us know early that our warrant will not be affected. So that is the property tax system that comes into the town. I can't say for certain if or what the government of New Brunswick might do, but they told us the funding that they give us on a monthly basis will not be affected. So that went a long ways to reassuring us that we could at least maintain a certain level of service moving forward. Current equalization year grants won't be affected, nor will the gas tax revenue from Canada and New Brunswick. And that is between eighty-five and ninety percent of our total revenue for the town, so that's important, that allows us to move forward and make plans as needed. So I submitted to council last Wednesday a more detailed document that's twenty-five pages long or something, and all, all the changes, and I'm just gonna touch on it very briefly here. We're gonna accept questions towards the end, if council could just bear with me on each of these, and when I say accept questions, that's from council. So, under the general government, we want to create a new disinfectant team, so I'm thinking three employees, taking one current employee and redeploying them, plus two seasonal hires, that will work in a rotation of seven days a week, eight to ten hours a day in order to be able to keep the town disinfected. This would be likely, you know, washrooms, benches, garbage cans, covers, railings, on our own property, and this quite a bit, I mean, we've got Centennial Park, we have, of course, the washrooms downtown. I was talking to Terry the other day, I think we have thirty or forty benches plus thirty or forty picnic tables, hypothetically, are supposed to be wiped down twice a day. So these are all gonna be on a circuit for these people, now this will be going over and over again to keep everyone safe. Excluding the current staff member, the estimated cost of the additional staff plus supplies is around sixteen thousand dollars, if we're estimating. Now, in order to pay for this, I have three main areas. Within the original budget, we had a municipal plan studies of forty thousand dollars. That included such thing as an economic development plan, a recreation study, housing studies, et cetera. And it was really, if you remember, this is supposed to be election year, it was to give a new council something to work on and to start helping them set their priorities. But with the election, more than likely next May, potentially this fall, highly doubtful, but potentially this fall, there's really no appetite for these studies right now, you know, consultants can't get down, can't do community services and stuff. So I'm suggesting we keep, delete thirty thousand dollars from that budget. Within our budget, we did have to hire a part-time seasonal bylaw enforcement officer that'd be working random days throughout the summer to help with bylaw enforcement, but more specifically, we'd be talking ticketing for parking infractions and things to help out, to try to reduce the problems this year. Again, I don't think with the large cut in volume we're gonna be seeing in traffic, that's probably not a position we have to do. That was a new position that we've been proposing for this year, so there won't be anyone that has been with us in the past that would lose that position. And then within staff and council, there's items for travel and professional development, and I'm just saying to cut that by seven thousand dollars. As things go on more online, there'll be less need for travel to places and less conferences and forums for us all to attend. I think in fact, the UMNB, which is held every October in Fredericton, has already been canceled for 2020. And that's where council typically goes to talk to other councils within the province and talk to the premier and the deputy, or the ministers, in order to find out what our needs are, but also where the province thinks they're going. So without that, that's a four or five thousand dollar savings in the fall. The next, and for those of those big titles, that's really our departments, we call them the staff, so the next department I'm talking is Economic Development. This was a hard one, because Canada Day is where Charlotte County and a lot of southern New Brunswick celebrates Canada Day, but the current mandatory order is saying all large-scale events are to be postponed, basically this year, that everything's canceled to the end of the calendar year, so we can save fifteen thousand dollars by canceling Canada Day. There was discussion about whether we could do a toned-down one, but the problem we foresee as staff is that, if you do anything, even toned down, you're gonna attract a lot of visitors to the community, and most other municipalities in the province have just cut everything, including the Harvest Jazz and Blues Festival, Canada Day in St. John, and there's, I think it's the Mamashie Folk Festival too, all big items, and so it's likely that the Canada Day should just be postponed for this year. Within it, we had a heritage budget for forty-five hundred dollars, council really hasn't earmarked, and I've only cut two thousand, thinking that we might have some heritage signs or things we might want to do internally, so I've left that, but it's still a couple of thousand dollar savings. We had internally a little budget for festivals and events that I cut in half. And then, the one increase, last meeting, last week, they'd agreed to a grant for the restoration of the high school field, and so there's five thousand dollars added back to economic development for the restoration of the Sir James Dunn slash Vincent, Prince Arthur Field. Now, a new budget item this year was tourism services, which talked about the famous accommodation levy that is actually implemented earlier this month, so, on the first of May. But obviously, it's on rooms, and there's gonna be a challenge in attracting overnight visitors to St. Andrews this year, the number one being provincial borders will either be closed or tightly monitored. I have, until at least the end of July, but after the discussions with the public health officer and premier today, I think we'll be lucky to see those opened up late into the fall, that they think that's been probably the most successful thing in maintaining COVID Day in New Brunswick, and it looks like there'll be very little external traffic coming in, and that'll be a big concern, as forty to thirty percent of our traffic in town comes from Ontario and Quebec, and then another ten to fifteen percent, from what I'm hearing, comes from the USA, so that's a big drop in available numbers. Another thing that we have to be aware of, of course, with so many temporary job losses, vacation spending will likely be down, so right across the province and even the region, if Nova Scotia and PEI become our bubble for the maritimes, you know, vacation spending is one of those funds that are easily eliminated from the family budget, if people are looking to pay power and rent and groceries and things, and so overall, that spending will be down. And in talking with local establishments, they're saying their bookings, you know, their advance bookings have dropped by forty and fifty percent, and of course, a lot of them are, still have a week before to cancel, so there's probably people that are holding off, hoping it opens up and still cancel, cancel, sorry. And what we don't know is how much drive and traffic there'll be. So in our accommodation levy, originally had a budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue, we hope would be generating, I'm projecting seventy-five thousand dollars right now, and the deputy mayor at the end may think that's little pessimistic, but we can have a discussion on that, that's at about a forty-five percent booking rate compared to what we thought before. Staff are still recommending having the visitor information center. It, in past years, it's been three attendants plus the director, but we're just talking the director and one attendant this year, a shorter season, usually it runs from early May to mid-October, right now, we're just saying from June 1st to September 30th, so we can get all the protocols in place and the operational plans that are being required before we can open up any of our facilities. Something new this year is, in order to do social distancing properly, we recommend operating it out of the arena lobby. Of course, we lost part of the, or where the VIC was in the past, for the new wellness center that's still under construction, and that we were gonna share space with Ministers Island, but that space is so tight that you couldn't get a clear separation between staff and the tourists, that we decided the arena lobby, well, it's not the prettiest, we thought we could fix it up enough and make it practical in order to address those concerns, if council decides that the VIC is, that they'd like to continue with it. We are still talking seven days a week, but only eight hours a day, so I'm thinking eleven to seven or ten to six, that we'd catch kind of the day travelers coming in, and the after-supper travelers who are coming into the region to grab a motel before they start exploring. If the seventy-five thousand dollars is correct, the balance of the tourism levy after supporting the VIC is forty thousand dollars, what should be used towards some promotion and development, so that will either be used this year, or more than likely carried forward to fall to start a program for 2021. The fire department has more pressures on them because of the pandemic, that they've had to put a lot of procedures in place and had to add extra protective wear for their firefighters and more precautions before they respond, in order to make sure that these volunteers are protected. I want to give a shout-out to the Fire Marshal's Office, who's been very supportive in supplying extra supplies. At this point, no cost to the town unless I get a bill later, but they've given them even thermometers and gloves, sanitation supplies and ninety-five masks, that are so hard to do, so the first responders in the town have been well-supplied, while the rest of us are fighting for it, they are able to respond in a safe way to anything that may come on. And so looking at that budget, very little can be reduced in light of the extra precautions. The only thing that I'm, that I think we can save on is, if you remember back in budget time, there's a new dispatch system being proposed by the province of New Brunswick, and this new digital trunk system as it's known, and we're supposed to align with it by May or June, but they sent us an email about a month ago that it's going to be delayed just because everyone at the government side is all tied up, and especially EMO and Public Safety who are moving this out are tied up in the COVID exercise, so we'll probably save ten thousand dollars on those extra fees by the end of, by the year. The Ross Library, the library services have begun to run, so I got notice today that our librarian is back in the building on her own, starting to set up the procedures and getting ready to open to the public. She doesn't know, and the province hasn't said how many weeks away that is until they open up to the general public, but as you can imagine, they have a large inventory that's gonna be handled by people, so the question is, if someone touches a book, how they gonna disinfect it or anything like that? Plus, they have these touch services all over the place, you know, seats and chairs, and there's a big question there. And so, having said that, they are working to try to get them open, but there is a time lag on it. Having said that, I've proposed about six thousand dollars worth of savings in the library, just because of, they're gonna end up being shut down a third of the year, so we're gonna take away from the books and periodicals a bit, the computer equipment back down a little bit, heats and lights, just because of its lack of use, and actually, we installed a new heat pump about three weeks ago, and that'll actually save fairly good on the winter billing, so that'll help to look towards that reduction. In the janitorial, right now, I'm thinking a twenty-five hundred dollar reduction, that one may or may not come to the pass, depending on how much cleaning the province thinks is needed, but that's what I'm proposing right now. For the Ross Memorial Museum, and even group in Sheriff Andrews' house in the blockhouse, in my thinking, to bring visitors, we need attractions, and so I think it'd be important for these things to be available there, so that if people are in town, that they know the town is supporting tourism and the day visitors even by having our own facilities open. We want to maintain them, but it'll be a shorter season, and then we need to determine protocols to allow public entry, and for the Ross Memorial Museum and even Sheriff Andrews' house, that's a little harder than anticipated, because the hallways for anyone that's in there are quite narrow, and so to keep that social distancing will be a lot of one-way signs and probably staff at the door just allowing, you know, bubble families in one at a time, so we've yet to determine exactly how we're going to do it, but staff have been working on a plan to allow use of these facilities this summer. For Sheriff Andrews' house in the blockhouse, at the preparation of this presentation, we hadn't heard from anybody on that, but I did have a meeting earlier today with the province, and they want it, they're saying that if we think we can open Sheriff Andrews' house, they will support us financially as they have in the past, but they aren't putting any pressure on us to open it, that if they don't think we can protect our staff or protect the public, then it's better to keep it closed. So, we're back to looking at that and trying to come up with a plan, and again, I think, you know, through the right measures, we can allow people to go through it. For the, for the blockhouse, which is operated by Parks, Canyon, the government of New Brunswick, it seems to be that they don't think the facility itself will be open this year, which makes sense, as it is such a tiny facility, but I haven't heard back from, only that they, it's gonna be closed for the foreseeable future a few weeks ago, but realistically, again, they can keep the grounds open, but the attraction itself probably couldn't be operated with a two-meter distancing. One of our own facilities that are gonna suffer financially is the arena. When I prepared this budget, I assumed hockey and organized sport wasn't going to kick in until next year, that maybe have been a bit early, as I see, there's a lot of pressure being put on by organized sports, hockey, speed skating, even this year soccer, baseball, softball, to try to get the facilities operating, so there's a potential that we'll have there. But with all that said and done, I just assumed that the revenue we have in the bank today is all we're gonna have for the end of the year, so there's a potential loss of revenue of about eighty-three thousand dollars. If we don't operate the arena this year, the big item that we're gonna save on is power, and we'll have savings of that of about thirty-seven thousand dollars, that helps offset that considerably. And then if we look at other line items, we think we can overall save in that particular department seventy-two thousand dollars, so the deficit's gone up by about eleven thousand, but overall, again, without laying off staff, it's a minimal, somewhat minimal effect. What I've told them, what will happen if we're able to run those facilities, any dollar we get in revenue will be able to put a dollar towards the expenses, so it'll be essentially washed at this point in time, as long as we get to open it by, say, the first of November or so, if we don't get to open it till later in the year, there won't be enough chance to open up revenue like in December to offset the extra expenses of running the ice plant for a month and a half or two months. In the Parks and Recreation budget, which covers the lawn mowing crew essentially, I'm recommending that we usually have seasonal staff that come in from April through October, and that they not be hired for this year to save costs, will have coverage by other staff. It'll be tight, that's for sure, but they think they can do it, but with the understanding from council and the community, that they may not get the attention, so as you know, for instance, King Street and Rita Moat and other areas, even the blockhouse, Centennial Park, all get mowed on a weekly basis, well, they may get a little bit shaggy looking before they can get that next mow, as they're trying to stretch themselves over several properties, but we think it'll be to an acceptable level, and by doing that, we'll save ourselves forty thousand dollars. St Andrews' market warp is gonna have a lot of challenges too. As of right now, the tour boat industry isn't sure they're gonna be able to operate this year at all. They're being classified the same as cruise ships, and so they have to follow those guidelines. Right now, and they're controlled by Park, or sorry, by Transport Canada, and they've been told they can't go out until July the first, so they've lost May and June already, and as you can imagine, if they had to keep a two-meter social distancing between families, it's gonna be about impossible in any of their boats, the Zodiacs will be challenged, but even the The Zodiacs will be challenged, but even the big boats will only be able to run with a quarter to a third of their normal passenger load. So it's it's going to be devastating for everybody potentially. Then on top of everything else, if we're going to control the traffic on the wharf, either through a gate or by having security down at the end, so vehicles aren't going up and down it, we're going to run between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. It's order again to the if you get too many cars out there, but sometimes we do. It pushes everybody over to one side, which reduces um social distancing, but also becomes a bit of a danger. So there's increased costs there in order to have the wharf operate. So in light of all these big challenges, the tour boat industry and the providers have asked that council reconsider the passenger fee for this year, but they'd like us to waive it altogether. And as a reminder to council and the public, the way it's worked in the past is that passenger fee is charged on a full boat load, whether or not they're taking ten people or fifty people. And if they're going to be just continuously at quarter loads, they they don't think it's going to be worth their while to make any runs. The youth center, we're recommending that the youth center will not reopen until after Labor Day. The coordinator there would be redeployed as part of our sanitation team. And then we still have to figure out how on earth we're going to fit teenagers who all like to be near each other and talking and stuff, trying to keep two meters different distance in a state space that isn't that big. So it'll give us the summer to try to figure this out and how to run this. Or if all else, maybe it'll allow us to move to the next phase within the governments' direction, the provincial governments, and that larger gatherings will be allowed and the social distancing space could be reduced a little bit to make it more feasible to operate the youth center. So all in all, just in operational savings, we're looking at saving three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the kind of the general fund. In general capital, there's a already with projects we've committed to, there's savings of sixty thousand dollars below budget. And then if we delayed the following projects, it would help us reduce the burden there too. So the street and parks, we originally have a generous donation from the Dunn Foundation for fifty thousand dollars. And we're going to put in a large pocket park with the fence and washrooms, but it was going to cost the town another sixty-four thousand. What we're recommending is that for this year, we just do phase one, which is building the first part of the park without, you know, do doing the base landscaping and then we'll reconsider going to phase two next year. And for the arena, there are some projects that are important but not essential for its operations to continue. So that's about another seventy-nine thousand that we can delay a year. We did have within our budget this year to repaint the courthouse, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. We, you know, it's nice, but the painting isn't a hundred percent needed right now, so we can delay it a year potentially to find us additional partners as well, whether through the province or federal heritage grants that would help save the town overall. And then we've already been told the Market Square refurbishment, which was going to be paid two-thirds by the town or sorry, by the province and the federal government was the plan. That request was denied earlier this year. And so we'll have to delay that until we figure out another source of funding or council or future council wants to take that on their own. But that's a project that was worth three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Of course, the town's one-third was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of net savings. With the utility operations, I've dropped the revenue considerably. I don't have it on here, but for the public, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars I dropped it by. And that's with the anticipated drop in tourism that some of the larger providers will be down significantly. Providers, businesses specifically have asked for consideration of rate increases. We delayed it last year. I'm putting it out there before council, you may or may not want to do it, and we'll have an analysis prepared for you soon. We've actually got it about ninety percent done, but I had to go over it with with Emily, our assistant treasurer, and I'll forward it to you probably late morning tomorrow for you to look at and be included in the council package on Wednesday for you to consider. If you want to do that, that will have to be discussed by council as an economic development proposal. At this point in time, the staff are neutral on it as whether to continue or not, but we have been asked by users about it. Within the utility capital, if you remember, we council tabled back in the April meeting, a couple of tenders related to what we call the Andrew Street Projects regarding main water main storm sewers, a storm at the arena as well as sanitary line on Market Wharf. And we're recommending that you go with that because after all said and done, the project came in twenty-three thousand dollars below budget. And we have concerns, especially as we know the American dollars gained a lot of strength against Canadian, that if we delay that a year, the cost will up significantly. And that's even considering in my budget that I gave to council, a significant drop in revenue that we could still move ahead with that. One thing we have is that council had approved repairing the large line in the lagoon. Now that we've had the spring to go and have a little bit of a closer look, that can be delayed a year with an impeding performance. But it certainly will have to be done next year. One unexpected savings that is permanent for the town is within the budget, we had a skater for the sewer system. Now, for those that aren't familiar, skate is basically an electronic system that monitors the sewer and provides alarms when things go wrong. And so we had that separately, but we've also had in the budget, a budget for repairing our pumping stations. Well, there's a component of the pumping stations called control panels that are the electronics of it. And we just found out a week ago that that the skater system, the programming actually already comes embedded in these control panels. So we saved ourselves honestly, just through luck by not by having this embedded software that will do what we thought we had to spend seventy thousand dollars towards doing. So through all of that, that is essentially the staff's plan, which in the general operations to reduce savings, we're able to set up the sanitation team and not affect services too much, except for the longer delay in the youth center and the expectation of the arena may not being able to be used until next year. But again, that's just assuming that the province won't allow organized sports to go forward. The utility, again, we've made an assumption of loss in revenue in order to to see that we can still balance some of these projects and board with them. So I guess at this point, Your Worship, I'd be open to any questions or discussions by council.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Just just for clarification before I open it to questions from counselors. The if council were to go with this package that staff are recommending, my understanding is from you, from the more detailed report that you provided earlier that we're actually going to break even. In other words, the revenue loss will be offset by the savings that you're proposing. Is that essentially it?
That's correct, Your Worship. And in order not to assume more debt, we also reduced our capital projects. So that again, it'll be a slight loss in services and some capital projects delayed, but overall, the financial health of the town will stay the same.
And just one more comment, as as measured against the asset management program, there's nothing that's being so-called sacrificed or delayed this year if we approve this that's going to put us in any serious jeopardy in the asset management plan?
Absolutely not. That anything we've recommended, it's because we feel comfortable. And if you know the senior management team here, we have to feel really comfortable before we'll make recommendations on any necessary assets, especially when it comes to our water and sewer department. So we feel very comfortable that we'll be okay to proceed without any surprises from problems that could arise.
Thank you, Mr. Spear, and thank you to the rest of the staff that participated in this. I know everybody had a hand in being involved in this plan. Council, I'll open it to questions from counselors for Mr. Spear.
Yeah, sure. So first, I guess first and foremost, thank you, Mr. Spear and Mr. Knopper. And I think Mr. Acton all had a role in developing this budget. So obviously, it's not an ideal situation for the town, but to come up with a plan like this and get us pretty close to back on on budget is is impressive. And to be completely honest, when all this was happening and I was looking at revenue loss, I actually pictured this document to look a lot worse than it was. And a big part of that is because of the efforts you guys all made, so thank you. I did go through it, it's kind of all over the place, but I use kind of that document that you sent out to us, the notes. Just made a couple of notes, so I'll just go through them in order. There's questions and just a few comments, you'll entertain it. The first one, I know you were going to start the cleaning rotations on on June first. A small change is maybe we could implement that for May thirtieth. The reason being is that's a Friday. May, June first is a Monday. I think what we're going to see is a large flux of tourists this year that come on the weekends since the New Brunswickers on day trips. And I think we're going to see a little less on the on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So I have I have a call tomorrow with a couple of the other major attractions in town. And a lot of people are circling that May thirtieth for when, you know, we can expect to start seeing a little bit more traffic. Quick one is, did we budget for any hand sanitizing stations for the downtown and various areas around the community that large, you know, people tend to gather?
Yeah, so within that sixteen thousand is included several sanitation stations and supplies. That there's a little bit of a wild card with that because we're finding the prices of that stuff have gone up astronomically. And so there's a little bit concerned, but as a big concern, it's really hard to find the stuff as I'm sure you're finding out at the Kingsbury that. So we're following every lead we can get our hands on, but that has been built into that sixteen thousand dollars sanitation team budget.
Sounds good. Yeah, we we've we just got ours in thankfully, but I can share that after with who we got it from. There is about a six-week fulfillment time right now, six to seven weeks. So they still are fulfilling orders, but it's that it's not that individual. It's the mass buy with the pump stations, which I think is what you're looking for anyway. The next one would be just the forty-five percent occupancy. I know you alluded to it. On a normal year in St. Andrews, about fifty percent of accommodations are around from people from New Brunswick. So forty-five percent occupancy under the current conditions, I think, still might be a little high just because of the amount of conferences and things like that that are that are canceled and in the group bookings, weddings, stuff like that. But I appreciate the fact that you took into consideration, and I think the budget was actually one-third of what was anticipated anyway. So you calculated that. I do want to talk to you a little bit about, I think we should go to close session as we talked about earlier, just on the different tourist attractions in town and the services provided because I am sensitive to the fact that there's employment around that. And it's never a pleasant conversation to have, I guess you could say, in the in the public eye when it comes to the people's jobs. The next one would be around the the Dunn Foundation donation. I don't know if there's any opportunity to look at kind of what the town's facing right now and kind of use that money for something that isn't necessarily new. I know that sounds bad or very appreciative, but I know that we're really struggling to make the budget meet and cutting a lot of projects. So I think a lot of people would be surprised to see us developing new parks in such a such a bad year, but that's just my opinion of it. And then if I jump into the overall document, you know what we talked about for about for the public's knowledge? When we think the public washrooms would be open? Because naturally, no matter how we market the town and talk about changing that, is people are going to come here and they're continuing to go to our essential services like Joey's Independent Grocery to use their washrooms. I know it's a little early in a normal year, but I think that we really need to get that open on its regular time phase, no matter what. So is do we know if we have a rough date on when that would be open?
Well, we're still working on the procedures. I'll be honest, June first, but we can probably, let me say this, June first is when I did the budgeting for it. But I think we can probably work it into less of a or shorter hours than we usually have and try to work into weekend hours. And so if council thinks they'd like to have those open, say, by the long weekend, we can probably arrange that and make arrangements either through a subcontractor with current staff to come in in overtime to do the sanitation to at least keep the Centennial Park and the public washrooms down at the town hall running. One thing I should mention too, it appears that we're only going to be able to allow one person in each washroom down here, so that men's washroom has two urinals and a stall. But I think we can only allow one person under the current guidelines. Paul, you can shake your head or that that seems to be what's being said about public washrooms. And so we'll probably have to have even years, the numbers are down. We're going to bring in porta potties to kind of offset the fact that we're going to lose stalls within our own washrooms because of that. And the wharf too, the wharf staff will be here relatively shortly, so we'll build add washrooms at the end of the wharf because there are only one-person washroom facilities anyway. So we'll work at that maybe if council thinks that's a good is a good idea, which, you know, in hindsight, it is a good idea. We can probably aim for, of course, it's the long weekend coming up, we'll aim to try to get those open this weekend, especially if the weather looks favorable.
That that sounds good because to your point of the weather's favorable, I think that you're going to see Joey's and all those spots get flooded with people that New Brunswick's, you know, temperature has changed. Originally, it was stay home. Now it's you can go out in groups of ten, businesses can open. So naturally, we should see the influx. I think it's, I think for the town's messaging, we are going to have to lighten up on it as well because there's a lot of businesses that are depending on us to have these services available to, I guess you could say, benefit there. So that's a good one. We'll talk about the different businesses, I guess, in close session. One thing that I wanted to throw out there is just a couple of ideas. I know, I don't know if you want to provide an update today on the farmer's market with their plans are. But I also wanted to talk to council, again, no decisions, but but leave all options on the table and talk to staff about is you're seeing a lot of other communities, most recently St. John announced that they're looking at closing certain streets in the community. I I know that some have already made decisions in North America. I read an article about how Tampa's doing it. But the reality is, is we have a downtown core. It's got a cluster of just a few blocks where people tend to gather. And the thought of closing Water Street is not one that I've ever really entertained. But I think if there was ever a time and a place, it might actually be this year. I just picture someone, a resident, going down to get their mail or stop at the bank and people coming every which way on the sidewalk and then not having enough space to step around and get their social distancing. But if you were to close a street, it would allow a couple of things. It would allow people to walk out on the street to have more space. But it would also maybe, you know, we'd have to look at it, but give maybe some opportunity for some of the businesses downtown to better utilize their space. People will be hesitant to go into their shops and their stores. But maybe if they had a little bit more room for encroachment, they could actually put a couple of items in front of their store to entice people to come and see what they have to offer. So there's a number of benefits of doing that particular proposal. There's a number of things that we would have to figure out, the first being parking, we're already pretty limited. Deliveries, we'd have to figure out, additional parking, handicap parking. There might be the odd person that has a driveway in there, how do they get in and out during the day? There's some logistics that need to be figured out, but I think there's merit in the community looking at that option to say, St. Andrews is doing everything it possibly can in place to protect the residents and visitors and providing an atmosphere with more social spacing would do that. So those are just some some ideas and thoughts on as we talk about COVID budget and how the town's operating. Those are just some budgets I wanted to throw, some ideas I wanted to throw out there today for for council's consideration.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else?
I know people have been asking me about the farmer's market and is it going to happen this year? So because everybody enjoys the farmer's market, there may be a logistical way to make it work. So staff may have already thought about that. Thank you.
Your worship, if I may add, staff can jump in, but they've they've met with the farmer's market. The farmer's market does have their own guidelines put in place by the province and have a detailed multi-phase plan of what that can look like. And just on the farmer's market, it's important that we realize that farmers have planted crops. They're they're very much needed as part of our sustainability as New Brunswick. And if we don't find a way for them to get their product in the hands, they're not going to grow as much crop. So, you know, I don't think that we're necessarily talking in phase one of crafters and everything like that. But for the people that supply food and things like that, I think it is something that the town, I believe Paul and Chris can add more to it, but they've already met with the farmer's market on what that looks like.
Yeah, that's correct, Deputy Mayor. And so right now, the the province and the town through me have given them the green light to start up on the twenty-first. That'll check my date, yeah, the twenty-first, which will just be like farmer's items only, not not the hot food sellers. And in the next week, they'll get into hot food sellers. They do already have their operational plan in place to have one-way traffic. They're only operating with a much smaller number of stalls as usual to give themselves more space. The one thing the town does have to do is they have to have a washroom. So we will be bringing a staff member that's going to have to man the washrooms on Thursday mornings to keep it cleaned up and to the until we get the plans in place for the longer term, so they can have that available. But that is the plan. And then so the twenty-first is for basically the the cold items or the fresh items. The twenty-eighth, they'll bring in the hot vendors. From my understanding, I'm not sure if they're going to be doing any of the art. I'm not sure if they're going to be doing any of the artisans this year or not, but at least they're going to be waiting a little bit of time before they bring in the craftmakers. Maybe Mr. Knopper can add to that.
Thank you, Chris. The artisans under the province regulations right now are prohibited from selling. So until the province opens up those regulations, there's no, there's no craft marketers at this point. It is strictly food. And again, moving to hot food vendors the following week.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments of the presentation?
If there's no more questions, your worship, I just want to sort of do a follow-up. I'm not sure you still shared me, Paul?
You're still shared.
Okay. So just, and I can take more questions, but what the next steps really in all of this is that, is you know, we have motions for tenders that as staff, we'd like to see approved tonight. If council wants, we should consider the Wharf fees and the water rates, probably sooner rather than later, because council had discussed about a month ago, that maybe waiting towards the end of the season. But as these businesses are making plans, they kind of have to know, you know, what participation the town is going to have, if any, in helping them saving cost. And I think it would be good that maybe not tonight, but at the next regular meeting of council, to approve the amended budget by motion. So that's our, kind of our new official budget. So it gives direction for us to move forward. So we understand where we're going. The council basically agrees to the suggestions that we've made.
Your worship?
Thank you, worship.
The next step, so if that's possible. Just if you're looking for some, some feedback on the Wharf fees, I don't know if keeping the dollar 50s possible, and then we just charge based on what their actual occupancy is. They may not be comfortable with that, but that would make sense, that, that we're just taking revenue off the people that are on their boat. So their third full, it's a third times a dollar 50, for example. I think it'd also help us understand, you know, let's be honest, we don't know how long this is going to be a challenge for the community. That information would also help us better, you know, look at fees moving forward, if we should be in a similar situation next year. So again, I don't know if that's within the rights of something we can do is charge on it per person versus just a blanket, because I would hate to say 50 cents. And, and you know, you've got a boat that's deciding to go up for five people, and they still have to pay 50 cents times 50, you know what I mean? I just hate to, I'd hate to be the reason why they're not running. And then just on that about the Wharf rates is, I'm thinking there has to be a better plan outside of having someone stand at the end of the Wharf. Financially, that doesn't really make a lot of sense to have someone standing there for the entire year. I don't know if there's an idea to put a rail up and then put a lock and give only the, you know, maybe it's the tour boat operators, the commercial fisheries, give them a key. I don't know if that's an option where they're, you know, where it is monitored and they're expected to close it, but have someone just stand down there for $15,000 and open and close the gate, to be completely honest with you, it doesn't make much sense to probably you or me. So there's got to be a workaround that, that we can do to prohibit that from, you know, that expense. And then just about water rates, just correct me if I'm wrong, but just, a large user that's looking for a break on water rates, is it not safe to assume that they'll be using less water as a result? Because there's not as many people staying. So if you had a hotel that was at 35% occupancy, wouldn't their water bill be about 35% of what it normally would be?
Most of the users, well, everyone knows, you know, it's, they also have a big, big meter at a golf course, which has nothing to do with occupancy, just has to do with weather. And so that's just one consideration. But overall, you're right, for anything that's directly related to occupancy, it shouldn't be down considerably, depending on the number of, of people there. The only thing I will remind council, I'm sure you're aware, but to remind is, this is the first billing that they're going to have, those higher rates that had been proposed a couple of years ago. So it was not just compared to last year, but their water bills are probably going to be at a minimum 25 or 30% above last year's rates, just because of the new billing structure.
Counsel, anyone else want to weigh in on that? The next steps seem appropriate to me. I'm just wondering whether we can deal with the Wharf fees and the water rates tonight, or whether that needs to be put off to the next meeting. I understand we need to deal with that, but how does council feel about that? Are you at a stage where you're prepared to debate and deal with that tonight?
Your worship, if I may interrupt?
Yes.
I really didn't mean for you to have to do all of that tonight. I think if you can just approve the tenders, and staff will prepare the other things, just a little more analysis. If nothing else, the Wharf fees and water rates are either, I think either schedules to bylaws or bylaw amendments, so we shouldn't be doing this tonight. But it's just if we can award the tenders tonight, then address everything else at the committee meeting and the June meeting, regular session of council will have given you enough time to deliberate and think about our suggestions and try to decide what direction you'd like to go.
And just for clarity, the staff recommendation, because we didn't talk about the, you know, the trucks and things like that, the staff's recommendation, we'd approve all of the tenders that are in the package for this evening?
That is correct. Most of those items are needed. The two trucks have been put off already by year. And so we want to move forth with that. And as we discussed in the utility, the Edward Street projects have a savings and are really necessary. And if, just to explain to the public, as part of the Edward Street projects, is storm sewer at the arena to improve that off the roof. Well, if we don't do it tonight, we're going to have to do it next year. We'll get a new wellness center operating there. So we'll have construction crews going through the basement and going through the side of the building and tearing up the parking lot, while a new team of physicians and physiotherapists and a gym are operating there. So I think logistically, it makes a lot more sense to do it this year when the thing isn't in operation. But from a savings standpoint, I think it's important to do it this year, too.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Spirit. If there, are there any other comments or questions? And otherwise, I think we're, we're in a position where we can then move to the motions that are being proposed for this evening.
Okay. Do you wish me to go ahead, Mayor?
Yeah, Councilor Bishop, sorry. Yeah, Councilor Bishop, please.
Okay. FA 200304 dated May 11th, 2020. The subject is TSA 2020-03, the Edward Street Water Main Renewal 2020. And the background is, at the March 30th, 2020 special meeting of council, council tabled the awarding of the 2020 Edward Street Water Main Renewal until further review of the budget could occur. The purpose of the 2020 budget update is to review the budget and how it would be affected by COVID-19. The town of St. Andrews, in coordination with CBCL, released tender TSA 2020-03 Edward Street Water Main Renewals 2020, which closed on March 16th, 2020. These tenders were opened at a public presentation at 2:00 PM on March 16th, 2020. Upon completion of the tender evaluations, CBCL has determined the tender that meets the requirements with the lowest quoted amount was Fairville Construction Limited at $273,205, including HST. The budget for the full project was $366,000. The actual proposed cost of the project is $324,670, even. It says, see staff report for breakdown. For additional background information provided are the CBCL tender letters and BOD comparison. Staff note, under the state of emergency identified by the province of New Brunswick, construction projects have been deemed essential and are allowed to proceed. And the motion is that council award TSA 2020-03 Edward Street Water Main Renewal 2020 to Fairville Construction Limited for the amount of $273,205, including HST.
Thank you, Councilor Bishop. Could I have a second there for that motion, please? Deputy Mayor, I see you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me just for a second, your worship. Sorry. Councilor Harrison, you're on mute, so we can't hear you, just so you're aware. Thank you, your worship.
Hearing no comments, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Thank you, Councilor Bishop.
Okay, second item, FA 200305 dated May 11th, 2020. And the subject is Arena Storm Separation Quotes 2020. And the background, at the March 30th, 2020 special meeting of council, council tabled the awarding of the quote for the Arena Storm Separation 2020 until further review of the budget could occur. The town of St. Andrews, in coordination with CBCL, invited quotes for repairs to the Arena Storm Separation 2020, which closed on March 19th, 2020. Upon completion of the quote evaluations, CBCL has determined the tender that meets the requirements with the lowest quoted amount was Fairville Construction at $44,352.22, including HST. This is in conjunction with the Edward Street Storm Tender, which includes separation at the arena. The budget for the full project was $366,000. The actual proposed cost of the project is $324,670. And it says, see staff report for breakdown. For additional background information provided are the CBCL tender letters and bid comparison. And the motion is that council award the Arena Storm Separation 2020 quote to Fairville Construction Limited for the amount of $44,352.22, including HST.
Thank you. Can I have a second there for that motion, please?
I second it.
Thank you, Councilor Akagi. Comments from council?
I think this needs to be done before we open the wellness center, because I wouldn't want to see the doctors walking across construction. Good job.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody, I didn't hear, I only heard two ayes. Everybody, any opposed?
Deputy Mayor was muted.
Oh, Councilor Gru.
I apologize for being late.
No problem. We're happy to have you here. Thank you. Any opposed? I think everyone said yes.
Everyone said yes.
Opposed? Seeing none? The motion is passed. Thank you, Councilor Bishop.
Okay, the next item is FA 200407 dated May 11th, 2020. The subject is Tender TSA 2020-10 High Pressure Breathing Air Compressor. The background, in the 2020 general capital budget, council allotted $40,000 toward the purchase of an air compressor for the St. Andrews Fire Department, so they can refill their own air canisters. Tender TSA 2020-10 closed on April 16th with only one bidder, Connors Breathing Air System, for a price of $46,650 plus HST. Fire Chief Terryo went back to the proponent about the overage and was able to negotiate another model that meets our needs for a price of $39,990 plus HST. The chief assures me this is an acceptable solution and can meet their needs. And the motion is that council award tender TSA 2020-10-High Pressure Breathing Air Compressor to Connors Breathing Air System for a revised quote of $39,990 plus HST.
Thank you. Can I have a second there for that motion, please?
As I move.
Thank you, Councilor Akagi. Comments from council?
All right. I think this will make it a lot easier for the fire department if they can refill their own air canisters. So that should be important for them.
Thank you, Councilor Bishop.
Kudos to the fire chief for going to bat and lowering the price. That's excellent. And I think this is equipment that will be beneficial to those fire people.
Thank you, Councilor Akagi. Any, if there aren't any other comments, I'm going to call the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That motion is passed.
Okay, as a quick intercede, just, just to give you an idea, as you know, we've had a couple of house fires over the winter, both one in Bayside and one in Shamcooke over the winter. And in both those cases, they were sending firefighters during the fight to St. Stephen to have their air tanks filled up. So it is important, it's something that they do use on an annual basis, as far as needed at the time. Plus, they are making trips throughout the year to fill their tanks when they haven't had to respond to a large emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Spirit. That's, that's a good clarification to explain to the public.
Thank you. Are we ready to proceed with the next one, motion?
Yes, Councilor Bishop.
Okay. FA 200408 dated May 11th, 2020. And the subject is TSA 2020-11 Half-Ton 4x4 Regular Cab Truck Award. And the background, within the 2020 utility capital budget, council allowed $52,000 before HST towards the purchase of a replacement truck for the water and sewer technician. The operator currently drives a 12-year-old vehicle that was due for replacement in 2018. The tender closed on April 17th, 2020 with the following offers: Moffitt Dodge, $46,000 plus HST. Downey Ford Sales, $40,558.90 plus HST. Charlotte County GM, $41,221.64 plus HST. The lowest bidder, Downey Ford Sales, did not meet the tender specifications and should be rejected. In addition to the vehicle, we need to, we need to purchase a cap for the trucks, the truck's bed, that will include slots for tools and common parts that will cost approximately $10,000. Motion, that council award tender TSA 2020-11 Half-Ton 4x4 Regular Cab Truck be awarded to Charlotte County General Motors in the amount of $41,221.64 plus HST.
Thank you, Councilor Bishop. Could I have a second there for the motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilor Gummichelle.
Councilor Gummichelle. Thank you, Councilor Gummichelle. Comments, council?
Your worship, just a clarification, in, in our utility budget, when we allocated 52,000 in capital, my understanding is that includes HST, is that correct?
No.
Capital budgeted?
Through your worship, our budgets are always, they're net the total HST price. It includes HST, plus we don't recover all of the HST back, so that portion's worked in.
So it's the total, total amount that we put in the budget is actually what, what is there?
Yeah.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spirit. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
One more question, your worship, is? One more question, your worship, is... Can, is this a situation, is the vehicle in bad shape? Is it, does it have to be replaced this year, or can it be extended to next year?
Or the work it's doing, it should be replaced this year, because the operator has to run out to the water treatment plant, and especially, you know, things happen in winter storms and things. And so if anyone's driven a quarter-ton truck, they know it doesn't handle icy roads really well. And especially, it's kind of got a short box on it for handling tools and things. So it's best that that be replaced. We are planning on keeping that quarter-ton in circulation just to be used from either admin staff if we have to run on sunny, hot summer days, or the bylaw enforcement officers and things, where we're already paying travel and mileage fees to some employees to do their jobs, so we can use this and keep it going for another year or two with minimal cost.
Counselor Gomishel?
Your worship, through you, I think it's a great idea to repurpose the old truck for the bylaw enforcement officer. I see him going all the time, and it's a lot of wear and tear in his vehicle and mileage and fixing up the old water truck and making it a bylaw enforcement truck, maybe with some lights and stuff. It's a great idea.
Music to my ears, Counselor Gomishel. Good, thank you. All right, any other comments? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, counsel. That motion is passed.
Okay. The last motion that I have today is FA 200409 dated May 11th, 2020. The tender for TSA 2020-12 Single-Axle Plow Truck Award. Within the 2020 General Capital Budget, Counsel allowed $272,000 before HSD towards the purchase of a replacement of one of the large dump trucks in Public Works. The two bids submitted for have different engines. The more expensive model exceeded our tender specifications. The tender closed on April 22nd, 2020 with the following offers. Applied Pressure Freight Liner, $284,875 plus HSD, the initial cost, and the trade-in value was $25,000. The bid amount was $259,875 plus HSD. That's $259,875 plus HSD. The second quote was Applied Pressure Freight Liner, $299,875 plus HSD initial cost. The trade-in value was $25,000, and the bid amount was $274,875 plus HSD. So, the motion is that Counsel award tender TSA 2020-12 Single-Axle Plow Truck be awarded to Applied Pressure in the amount of $259,875 plus HSD.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Could I have a second or for that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Comments, counsel?
Well, I must say that if this is going to be used for plowing, we have to have good trucks to plow our streets, so it's a necessity.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. If there aren't any other comments, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion is passed. Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Counselor Akagi?
Okay. I have reference number, two numbers for May 11th. It's PW200401B and PW200401C. And these are amendments 8-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates. In recognition of the strain, water bills may leave on some of our users. Counsel indicated that they would like to extend the payment terms to six months. Unfortunately, the payment terms are worded within the bylaw, so Counsel needs to do a bylaw amendment. Draft 1 of the amendment is allowing a six-month payment terms for the spring billing only. Staff would recommend a review of the billing and COVID-19 before extending it to the fall billing. History of the motion in the background. Motion 143-04/20, Amendment to the Amendment A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, remove the line billing period October 1st to March 30th, 2020. And the second motion is Motion 144-04/20, Amendment A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, water rates, as amended first reading. At this point, Counsel may want to consider a change to these water rates. The motion be that leave be granted, for the first motion, that leave be granted to move to second reading of Amendment Number A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw related to water systems, wastewater, sorry, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates.
Thank you, Counselor Akagi. Could I have a second or for that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Comments, counsel? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? That motion is passed, so I will now move to read for second reading the amendment. This is Amendment A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates. Being enacted by the Council of the Town of St. Andrews, the Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates is hereby amended as follows. One, by deleting Section 29 and replacing it with the following. Section 29, Penalties for Non-Payment. A, in the event that rates, fees, rental, legal fees, interest, and penalties as herein provided are due and payable for a period of 180 days, such charges shall constitute a special lien and charge on the real property in respect of which such charges shall have been imposed pursuant to subsection 117, subsection 9 of the Local Governance Act. B, if the charges referred to in section 29A hereof shall remain unpaid after expiration of the said 180 days as referred to herein, the town may, one, sue in the name of the town in an action for debt, and, two, cut off the water and/or wastewater service provided to such property, and may discontinue such service until such time as the account, including arrears, and the cost of disconnecting the service have been paid in full by the owner. Now that is read on this 11th day of, for the second time, on the 11th day of April 2020.
11th day of May, Mayor.
I did say May, didn't I?
No, you said April.
I apologize. I retract that. I'll say the 11th day of May 2020. Thank you, Counselor Akagi.
You're welcome.
Can move to the second motion?
So the second motion, that leave be granted to move to third and final reading of Amendment Number A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw related to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates.
Could I have a second or for that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. If there are no comments, I will call, I'll call the vote, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Then I will move to third reading by title of that motion for the third time. The amendment, this is Amendment A-3 to Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw related to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates. And I will move to, the preamble is, being enacted by the Council of the Town of St. Andrews, that Bylaw Number 19-07, a bylaw relating to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems, and wastewater rates is hereby amended as follows. One, by deleting Section 29 and replacing it with the following. Section 29, Penalties for Non-Payment. That is read, for the third time, this 11th day of May 2020. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomishel?
Last but not least, thank you, your worship. Reference number RCS 200305 dated May 11th, 2020, submitted by myself, and the subject is Heather Curling Club Lease Waiver. The background reads, "The Heather Curling Club has been a longtime partner of the town of St. Andrews for the provision of curling for the local area. It is entirely run by volunteers and contributes to the local economy as well as to being one of the busiest user groups at the arena. In March, the state of emergency as a result of the pandemic caused the cancellation of the Alpine Monspiel, the club's major fundraiser. Consequently, the club is concerned they can't make their final lease payment. They are requesting that Counsel waive their final lease payment of $12,063.65 plus HSD for the 2019-2020 season." And the motion reads, "I move that in recognition of the 2020 coronavirus pandemic, Counsel agrees to waive the final lease payment of the Heather Curling Club for the 2019-2020 season in the amount of..." And then there's a blank in there. $12,063.65 plus HSD.
Thank you, Counselor Gomishel. Could I have a second or for that motion, please?
I'll second.
Counselor Harrison, thank you. Comments, counsel?
I just note that, Mr. Spear, you brought that into the budget, right? When we reviewed it, I saw that you took it off already, so.
That is correct. Sorry, I was shaking my head. That is correct, your worship and deputy mayor.
Is there anything that they could pay?
Counselor Grue? I'll take your question first.
I think at the last meeting, we had tabled this because we weren't sure about the documentation. We have been provided with documentation that shows that the Heather Curling Club suffered a loss of $13,810 as a result of the cancellation of their major event for the year, which I think sort of equates to the $12,065 plus HSD. So I think quid pro quo there.
Thank you, Counselor Grue. Counselor Akagi, you had a comment?
Well, no, because I read that, and I also read that they do not qualify for any federal provincial assistance, so I guess it's hard luck on everybody. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Akagi. Any other comments, counsel? I'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That motion is passed. Thank you, counsel. Is that... I don't think we have any new business at this point in time, so I'll move to, are there any questions from our viewers? Mr. Knopper, have you been tracking that?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I have been tracking this, so I do want to say you've averaged about 30 viewers on the show, on the meeting tonight, so proud of that for you guys. There's three real comments here. First one came from Susan McDonough, that says, "Yea to Closing Water Street, Restaurant Tables Outside." So as a positive to that. Jill Puller Sims has a question. She says she's interested in building a Level 4 group home in St. Andrews. She has a lot in mind that is an MR1 zone. Anyone opposed to that, to building in St. Andrews?
Need a little more detail.
Yeah, as you say, there should be more details provided.
Nice try.
And final, and final comment is from Joanne Carney. She says, "There is a student that is hired each year, wages covered by student program for the Wharf, so perhaps the student can monitor the gate this summer and not cost so much extra money. The Wharf in June will be less busy overall with a significantly reduced traffic." Those were all the, those were all the questions or comments provided, other than people saying they're watching.
We will, we'll take that into consideration, and again, the second question will certainly, well, all those questions, we'll certainly pass those off to staff and hopefully be able to respond in a little more detail to those, particularly the question about zoning. Thank you. If that's, counsel? Comments from counsel? Comments or counsel?
Notice to remind you, your worship, I'd like to do a closed session in regards to employment matters to the town of St. Andrews.
Yep, great. We will do that. That's all right. If there aren't any comments at this point in time, I really don't have any other than to, again, add my comments to others about the strength of the reports that we receive from our staff in terms of the very difficult task of looking at the budget in view of the losses that we are anticipating, and I'm very pleased, and I know all of counsel is with the quality of the information that we're receiving from our staff. Anyway, Counsel, Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion to go into closed session, please?
Yeah, your worship, I move that we go into closed session.
I second it.
Secondary from Counselor Akagi. All right, to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will go to closed session. Thank you again, as we go into closed session. Thank you to the members of the public who joined us. Stay safe. Counsel, please wait till I give you the notification you are in closed. Time to call it quits for the night? Need a motion to come out of closed session?
No, you need a motion to come out of closed.
Yep. Motion to come out of closed, please?
I move we come out of closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Secondary?
Counselor Grue also raised his hand.
Yeah. Secondary?
Raise the vote.
We don't vote? Okay. Everybody agrees we're coming out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, thanks very much. We accomplished a lot tonight, I think. We're getting pretty good at this. We're getting pretty good at this.
I still.
Thank you.
Face-to-face meetings.
And go. Yeah, we may be there soon.
Yeah.
I guess. I guess, yeah, sir, yeah, that's what I said. We could probably actually start face-to-face relatively soon, but it's going to have to be in some type of weird configuration to do the social distancing like we had. If you remember, we tried to have that meeting just before we went to teleconferencing where one counselor per table, so you're spread out over about 70 feet. But we're probably could do that almost anytime from my interpretation, Paul, because you're allowed up to 10 people right now.
Yeah.
What's that?
CHCO wouldn't fit then, if we did that.
I see, I see no benefit because the public couldn't come anyway because it would put us over 10. So why would we, I don't, I don't know why we would do it when we can still keep them engaged online through, through doing it this way.
So. We're getting, we're getting more public engagement with the Zoom than we are with our in-face meetings.
That's true.
Sure.
You are.
Councilor Guma Shell dismisses that after meeting beer.
Comes along, something old is lost.
And Council, Council Guma Shell, I would have to stop doing council meetings in sweatpants if I did that.
Got 10 people if we count Kermit.
You guys.
Well, I'll leave you with this one thought, folks, is Japan has had a horrible time doing, working from home because all of the businesses in Japan are still using fax machines. And they stamp each fax with an ink stamp. So they haven't been able to do social distancing because of that. So makes you wonder.
Society with the best internet in the world is still using faxes. That's almost mind-boggling. All right, everybody, well, I guess it's good night, so.
Nice to see you all.
Good night.
Here, buddy. Don't forget, next Tuesday night, we're meeting again.
Tuesday afternoon, Chris.
Or Tuesday afternoon.
At 2 o'clock, that's what.
Oh, even better. Okay, we'll see you next week then.
Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday afternoon at 2 o'clock. You were all sent an invitation for it. I'll be sending out the meeting.
Okay.
Please take care.
Thanks, guys.
Night, everyone.
Good night.